Okay, we're gonna call this meeting order. October 7th. Regular session meeting in the town of Manio. We're gonna change the agenda a little bit and do a roll call first. We want to do, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Selby. I'm gonna go ahead and call the roll so we can establish a forum. First, Mayor Owens. Next, Mayor Protem Selby.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke.
Present.
Mayor Protem, you have a, you have a quorum present.
Thank you, Manager Ayers. We will have a moment of silence. Thank you. And now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on agenda is adoption of the agenda. Manager Ayers, if you would, take over.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item three, the adoption agenda. Now, this is for action. We require a motion, second, and a vote.
I move to adopt the agendas presented.
Okay. All in favor? Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll go ahead and do the roll call if you'd like. So, we had a, the motion by Commissioner Borland, the second by Commissioner Mann. And for roll call, I'll go through with the attendees who've been noted as present. That would be Mayor Protem Selby.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, you have a unanimous vote for adoption of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll go into item number four. This is a consent agenda. This item is for action. This has multiple items, including the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 2nd, approval of minutes recess workshop on September 16th, approval of recycling contract amendment with bay disposal, approval of budget amendment number one, and approval of resolution 2020-09 for the state revolving loan for the Shallow Bag Bay sewer pump station replacement. This, and this item is for action requiring a vote, a second, I'm sorry, a motion, a second, and a vote.
Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, Mayor Protem, you've got a motion by Commissioner Mann, a second by Commissioner Borland. I'll go ahead and take the roll call if it's all right.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mayor Protem Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, you have a unanimous vote on the consent agenda. All right.
Okay.
Next up, item five. This is a section entitled Presentations and Reports. This section is for information. There are five items here under Presentations and Reports. And the first one, we have a, we have a guest here to present to the Board of Commissioners and the public. I'm pleased to introduce Angie Crawford. Angie is a principal at Boomerang Design. This is a well-regarded, well-regarded architecture firm. Angie holds her bachelor's from Texas A&amp;M and her master of architecture right here in North Carolina State. She has been recognized as an outstanding architect, and we are so pleased to have her give an update on her work and her team's work at the new campus for the College of the Albemarle, right here in the town of Manio.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. I am gonna be brief and available for questions. But tonight, what I'd like to do is go ahead and give you an update on the facility. I'm gonna start with the schedule. As you all can see, demolition is well underway at the site. We are going to be starting with the next phase, which is a site package that is currently out for bid. That work will begin sometime late in October, early November, once the demolition is complete, and then it will carry through until about midpoint in February. At that point, a building will begin construction and will start going vertical. So, the site package will be bidding in the month, this month, and then the building package will be bidding next month. So, with that, we're gonna start with a look back on the facility. The goals of the facility were, number one, this to become a first choice for higher education. We really want this to be a facility that the students in Dare County want to attend. And wow, with the opening up right now, you're not gonna miss it. Really wanted to create a true community college campus, one that is connected with the building, the professional arts building that is on campus, and start pulling that together, and you'll see how we've done some of that in a few moments. We want to create a park-like exterior with the exterior spaces to encourage community engagement. I don't think anybody will deny that this facility is gonna become front and center in your community. Standing across the street and looking at the campus right now, it is gonna be quite amazing. Our other goals were to design an interior environment that encourages students to connect and gather in and out of the classroom. This is critical for the development of students. It's critical for the growth of the campus and for that campus pride. We want to have amenities nearby that are close and attractive to students. And we want to brand the campus. We want to create that community pride and school spirit. These are all the foundations for the development of the design. If you go to the next slide, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk you through some of the historical context that inspired the design of the building. So, we looked at, these are just a few examples, but these are some of the, the context locally that has driven the design of the building between the Roanoke Marshes Lighthouse, both original and the reconstruction, the Phoenix Square, the Town of Manio Building, the Pioneer Theater, and just some of the shopping areas downtown. We really looked at a lot of what makes Manio great and tried to develop that into the facility. If you go into the next slide, what I'm gonna do is start walking you through some of the exterior development. I am gonna say that we have not finalized exterior colors yet. That is happening this month. We'll be meeting with folks from Town of Manio, as well as Dare County, and the schools, the school to go through options on what the exterior design. But this is where we are right now. So, the facility is a two-story building. It's contextually significant within the community and the fact that we're using a lot of local-like materials on the exterior of the building, again, going back to that historical context. We're really trying, as I mentioned, to open up and create that community feel. Looking at this elevation right here, imagine this is 64 right here. So, this is the view that you could get from 64 looking across the street. Outdoor patio is blending the indoor-outdoor life. That is what makes Manio great. You guys have a wonderful environment here. People are in and out all the time, and we want that blend on this campus as well. We just want it to be part of the community. We've looked at solar shading and solar orientation and how this building is sighted on the building, really trying to be as sustainable as possible. We have brought in, you can't see it much in the renderings, but there's a lot of cross bracing that's gonna be shown through the windows inside the building, which is gonna be reminiscent of the original Roanoke Marshes Lighthouse. You're gonna see some of that as well. The patio environment's looking even to the, let's call it theater over here and how that blends in. We've really looked at how it blends in within the spaces, the roof lines, the eve brackets, making everything as pedestrian-friendly as possible, and then really trying to blend it into, again, a community college campus. If you go onto the next slide, we're gonna look at a few more images of the exterior. This would be your approach, once you've parked and you're walking into the campus, kind of the main front door from a parking perspective, trying to keep things as pedestrian and as accurate as we can in terms of scale and human context. This is a big building. I will not deny that in terms of it being two-story and the scale of it, 30,000 square feet. Of that, we've broken it up into smaller modules so that it does feel very, very comfortable as you're walking up to the facility. To move onto the next slide. This is the approach, almost what will be, and you'll see a site plan in a moment, what will be perpendicular to 64. Again, the building being sighted as close to north-south as possible so that all the classrooms can get borrowed natural light into them. Again, that pedestrian-friendly biking opportunities, close parking nearby, all the things that are very important in your development ordinances. Move onto the next slide. And then this is a feel from internal on the campus. As you walk between the two buildings, we've created a courtyard environment in which students can walk, community can walk, anybody can walk straight onto this campus any time of the day. And then your approach to the new building, there'll be an outdoor amphitheater space. There'll be outdoor dining and patio space. You can see close-ups of some of the solar shading and doing on the southern side of the building. And really, this is where we want the community to engage on the, on the site with students. If you move onto the next slide. This one's looking at an aerial, so you can get a real feel for the site plan of the building. Unlike the existing professional arts building that is sighted back here, the existing school that is coming out here, we are gonna be running this building perfectly. Return the parking so that it isn't all along 64. We try to keep it more internal and develop the site as a community college campus. We want a lot of pedestrians walking around here and try to keep our traffic, our vehicles down along the perimeter. Again, starting to tie this building into the rebuilding, we will be replacing the existing buildings with, is, complement. Corridors, there's our back doors, there's our couple of corridors. And we will be focusing on, on the final sign of, of the site. So, you guys can make the cameras, like, out, which we're gonna do. Help it out that as well. All right. So, we've got a monumental sign, and one thing that's really important is the college. Okay, look, I don't mean, I don't mean building, but we need to know the building's everything. All of our options are, are spaces to, 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 to. So, we need to be looking one of those on, more closer to the rental side of the site. And if you move onto the next slide, just to give you an overview of the facility, it has both a front door and a back door that's gonna face internal campus or parking. We'll come into the conference area, we'll open a collaboration, we'll have a library, testing center.
Both the state and everybody for a bit of a loop there. So, but even despite that, she's been working on business relations, inventorying of businesses and assets here in the town, and also related activities in terms of business outreach. And then you'll hear more about that soon. Now, we are working with the state, even though the state had initially stopped doing some of the kickoff activities due to COVID and their own restrictions on travel into municipalities. We do want the meeting. The strategic planning, of course, starts. It's so important to try and get that in person because when you're facilitating conversations and bringing community members together, it's very helpful to get that in person. And given the current guidelines, we believe that can be done in January of 2021. We're, we actually have a conference later in the, later in the month with the state, and where a date will be set and we'll get the word out to all the community members, stakeholders, businesses, anybody who might be interested in this program. Now, as part of that, they'll be helping us with strategic planning. Of course, facilitating community meetings and even doing organizational sessions, there are different, different subgroups here because it's not just businesses, it's not just nonprofits, it's not just residents. Everybody needs to come together at a program like this. And they're going to provide us over the course of this program, technical assistance, access to academic development tools, even assistance with funding and grant programs. So, there's been money to the table here, and we can't wait to have that first session. Now, the Downtown Associate Community Program also likes to have, make, make sure they do have support of businesses. Well, I think the Town of Manio has demonstrated, has demonstrated their support for businesses. This is a quick update on promotional activities. In fact, it's timely because some of our promotional activities stopped just this past month, so we wanted to see what, you know, what exactly, what exactly has been done. So, some of the promotional activities, as we were coming out of Phase One in COVID, we talked to the board about, can we utilize some of our funds that we had some, some things canceled? So, we had some programming there, though, for, to support these businesses. As things started to open up, people were still pretty hard hit, individual residents as well as the businesses that create jobs for our community. So, so many activities with, we had, as we go on, we've got radio ads and online streaming. Now, that was throughout the Outer Banks and beyond by online streaming. Paired with that were some social, were social media ads, and as of this time, we've gotten thirteen hundred and thirty-seven click-throughs to, to our, our dedicated site on this. We also did cooperative advertising with others. The Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, for example, we did some, an e-blast promotion with them, email to many, to a lot of folks, and we got five hundred clicks out of that to our sites. And they also, the Visitors Bureau has been helping us with some free ads as well. You may have seen on social media where they actually are featuring the town and some of the special things about our town. We're focusing on things like, because we're different. This is, this is, we, there's some of our historical illness, our waterfront, our, you know, the boardwalk, the arena, those kind of things. It's nice to show, differentiate how the Town of Manio is different from other communities that they serve, and they've been great about supporting us with that. And even, and print media, this was kind of an all of the, all of the above strategy. So, even print media was involved in this, you know, press releases and assistance from a local newspaper, but also we had placed a, placed a, an article in the Outer Banks this week done by One Boat, and then other merchants signed on to have their own advertising clustered around it, featured Manio and its special way of life. And that one, the One Boat says they put eighty thousand copies on three hundred stands in the Outer Banks, and that they also increased our story to a hundred thousand subscribers. So, of course, we do promotional activities, and you have to have somewhere to send them. We, we actually talked about a couple of different sites. The board heard of, of very early in this crisis, we'd received some feedback from the community, especially with so many things happening in Phase One of the pandemic, desire for, for more outreach to the public and ways to kind of connect people with programs and things. So, Manio Life was a, was stood up in the course of about a week by town staff, and it was a new website, Facebook, Instagram, and it was created early to support businesses, residents, nonprofits, connect with anything from, from special programs for delivery of food and food banks, special programs for businesses, loans and grant relief programs, a whole range of things. And we also did spotlight articles and things like that also to get, you know, some messages of hope out there as well and connect people together. That particular platform got, has had four thousand page views already since it was started, and seven hundred and ten followers on Facebook and six hundred and twenty-eight followers on Instagram. So, it continues to have life even as we've moved from Phase One of the pandemic or the, or the, you know, the governor's plan for reopening in the pandemic to now as we're entering Phase Three. Of course, Discover Manio, I mentioned about driving, you know, driving, providing a destination. If we do a promotional program, we had to have somewhere to send them. We couldn't just say, oh, visit Manio and not explain to them what all is here. So, the Discover Manio website was also done in-house, and so a new website, not just Facebook and Instagram, but also Pinterest as people perhaps build their trips and think about Manio as a destination in and of itself, not a side trip. And that, that page was, was put together. It so far has two thousand page views, three hundred and eighty-nine followers on Facebook and a hundred and thirteen on Instagram. It was, it was, that destination, it provides that landing page. So, anytime we do it, our marketing support program, there's somewhere to go, and any business in town would have the opportunity to go ahead for free, and they're, they were already placed on there and using their own website then. So, we send them to the websites of people. We don't try to recreate that. We make sure the businesses have that linkage right there. So, and the feedback has been positive on these activities, ranging from, yes, our first spotlight article on, on gift certificates to supporting a local business. That got two, two significant purchases between two and three hundred dollars in the first twenty-four hours, to positive feedback from the business community, both online and in person. So, trying to, as we continue to, to research, just want to make sure we're getting good, positive outcomes for the expenditure of funds, because that's just so important. Of course, that, as, as we go to the next slide, you'll actually see the, you know, this is a snip from the front page of Discover Manio. Now, I know folks on, that's on the left side there, and there's so many things where to say what to do, even how to, you know, kind of adventure, you know, adventures to have here and itineraries and things like that. And then on the right side, you actually see a little snippet there. Our campaign was actually featured by the State of North Carolina. You see the North Carolina Main Street Center actually put out on their own Facebook page about our campaign and how it's trying to help, help businesses here in Manio. So, we're just so pleased to see the state, you know, recognizing what's being done here in Manio and coming together. As we go to the next slide, this is also related to a, we, we have a slide here on the Manio Business Association. The board and the public heard about MBA. This is the Proposed Merchant Association, and what we're looking at at this point, of course, is assistance from the town. This is, can take different forms, we'll talk a little bit about that, but assistance from the town, but leadership by business owners. Now, these are the folks that are living and breathing their business, they know it best, and also what techniques help. So, these are the folks who will be leading this organization. We're just trying to help get it off the ground, providing that kind of assistance. And also, there's been coordination with attractions and nonprofits, because some of our traffic, you know, that cross pollination between the various attractions here in greater Manio, either within Manio or nearby, that's been, that's been going on for years, but making sure we're getting that close coordination with the executive directors and the staff, members of those organizations, that's just really important. And we've seen examples of that over and over, folks from attractions pointing people where to, where to eat in Manio, where to stay in Manio, and vice versa. Here are some of the places you can go, whether you, whether you're just, you're on your bicycle, whether you've got your family, whether you're interested in history, whatever it might be. Now, the current status of the project is, or the potential program is, the organizational meeting was in June 2020, listing sessions, multiple ones were held in July of 2020, and of course, receiving feedback from those in August. An interest survey was put out in September, and so far, we had received, as of, as of today, the very latest info, forty-five responses, forty of whom were, actual were businesses, and five of whom were attractions or nonprofits. So, and of those responses, this was a short five, five-question survey. Are you, here's the kind of the framework. Are you interested? Yes, if not, why not? You know, a question like, when would you like to meet? Because we have folks, we have different needs, and we got a whole range of, let's just say, not everybody wanted to meet at the same time. But nonetheless, trying to gather information, engaging, support for this particular initiative. So, from a path forward, right now, we have, I, I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest, I had hoped for a higher level of response from businesses, but let me, let's be realistic, we're still in COVID world, and we've got business owners who are just working hard trying to scrape and get by. Some of them have actually have, had to take over all of the operations instead of relying on, you know, employees full-time or part-time. So, many times, these owners are doing double duty. So, I'm very respectful of how, you know, how much time business owners, they, they may not have time available for this. But our, kind of our two-pronged path forward, on one hand, we can go ahead and assist and get this business association off the ground. It's something that having business government relations is important. You know, town staff can't go to a hundred and fifty to two hundred businesses and ask each one of them, what do you think about this, or that, or this ad campaign, or this relief program, or whatever. So, having one association is, would be helpful. Now, if we do that, we can assist, we, we, as mentioned before, with the board, you know, we can assist with the formation, setup of the 501(c)(6) Merchant Association, helping getting these organizational things, even some help, initial staffing and marketing support. And, and that's the kind of thing, if we can help kick them off for the, for the year, they can get free dues for a year, we help them along, and then business owners would take, you know, would take the leader, take, take on the leadership from the beginning, but then take over all the running of it over, after the first year. So, that's, that is one path forward. Another path forward is, if we think there's not enough interest, then maybe we postpone it till after COVID settles down and just fold all those initial businesses and, and ask them to come participate in the DAC and be part of that core group with the Downtown Associate Community Program, for which we'll be having in the coming months, that, that stakeholder meeting, that kickoff and strategic planning. Either way, I think these are, the folks who have answered are, are, are interested, and we've had some very enthusiastic people, and I want to honor and respect what, you know, what they've brought to the table, and want to find some way to continue to help these businesses. So, in terms of economic development, that's, those are really the multiple things we're doing, whether it's the, our pathway to the Main Street, whether it's our marketing promotional support, or helping to jumpstart the Manio Business Association. If I, if there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer those before going to the next topic, or if any feedback is, is forthcoming, be welcome to receive it.
Any questions?
Yeah. Manio Business Association. You know, it's, it seems like it's a, it will be, if we move forward with helping get it organized, it feels like a small financial burden, but what does that actually look like to put the resources forth to, to move forward with it? And, you know, I think it's, I was heavily involved in trying to get out there and recruit people, and I was talking to Michelle briefly before we got started here, and I think one of the cool things about, we do have a, it's not as many, but it's, you know, we're talking about twenty, twenty-five percent of the businesses getting feedback from them. And then there's other folks, we didn't really have anything to say, okay, sign up for this, we're moving forward. You know, so it was kind of just tell me you're interested, and a lot of people didn't reply, so I think we got a decent number. I know you, you said that it was slower than we liked, but we also got a good snapshot, you know, where we got all different kinds of, of businesses, and so it's, you know, you've got five attractions there. So, I think we got, I think we did, I think we did pretty good. But back to my question with the, what the actual financial burden would be.
Yes, and, and, sorry, Mayor Protam Selby. Commissioner Borland, yes, appreciate the feedback, and again, and I, and I can concur the folks who were responding and involved in both, whether it be the listing sessions or the, or the surveys, just interested, creative folks, just, you know, really trying to, to get involved. So, we, we have, already actually have budgeted funds in there under, under our Community and Economic Development Department, in the range of ten to twenty thousand dollars to help with everything from the legal fees needed to set up the 501(c)(6) Merchant Association, additional marketing support, and some of the stuff is also being at staff level. So, we're trying to do this initial stuff on a shoestring. So, the Discover Manio site, that was developed by staff. So, so we, again, been trying, trying to do it on a shoestring, you know, to, until we knew that this thing had viability, but if, if we do move forward, we already have money in the budget for, to press forward with the organizational and initial assistance here.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a question. Since the pandemic, have any, if you know of, have Manio lost any business? Have any businesses closed down because of economic, economic, uh, issue?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Selby. Joining us, joining us today is our program manager, Michelle Bunce, who's been working, there was initial, in our initial Downtown Associate Community application, our town planner, Melissa Dickerson, for example, had done a survey of businesses and things like that. Since the state legislature prohibited towns, starting around 2015, from doing this privilege license or business licenses, we don't have a database of businesses, so it takes that actually kind of door-to-door, whatever. And, and Michelle's been building on what Melissa started and has continued this. So, Michelle, if you have a, have an update for the Mayor Protam Selby?
Well, we actually did speak to one business today, which was Duck Village, the yoga business that was downtown in the waterfront shops, and I did talk to them today to confirm. I had seen that, that their storefront was, was posted with a vacancy sign, and so I contacted them, and unfortunately, she did have to close this location for her business. She is still in business in Duck, but because of the strains, you know, the restraints from COVID, financial burdens, she did have to go back to her one business in Duck, which is where it originated. So, that one business, we did lose that, that location for that business. And as well, the Tranquil House Inn has opened, but 1587 has not reopened. They felt that the guidelines set forth by the governor really did not fit their type of restaurant business appropriately. Could not provide the quality of food and service that they would like based on those guidelines. So, unfortunately, 1587 was not able to open. They, they do have a smaller area in their restaurant, it is really hard to social distance with the size of that facility. So, unfortunately, because that was one of my favorite places, I love to eat anywhere, but, so it was unfortunate. But luckily, they were able to still open the inn and do okay with that. But this, right now, that's the only facility, is the only restaurant or businesses that we've, we've actually heard that have either closed or not been able to open at this point, been affected. Outside of, I know Jump Masters was trying to reopen and some of those with the new guidelines that are set forth.
Yeah. Board, have any more questions on this?
Yeah, just to add on to that, I think one of the things, too, that we'll likely see, you know, we're so seasonal around here, so we don't know if we're out of the woods yet, and this pandemic has been so different to so many different people and businesses, and just the impact, and who's been really, you know, been forced to close versus who's been able to thrive, as we have been busy down here. And, you know, is, how well-equipped are people to enter the off-season when bills are still coming due? So, I, I hope that no other businesses close their doors, but I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we see the impact going all the way into whatever next year looks like.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protam Selby. So, item number, item number five, C on the agenda, this is the report on Marsh's Light Boardwalk. This is, this is another issue that the board has provided, has provided guidance on and wanted to provide, get initial information back for its decision-making. So, as we go to the first slide in here, it talks about the feasibility update, and this is based on the last action, which was to procure an engineering report from a qualified, qualified engineer to both assess the condition of the current, current boardwalk as it is, but also to project any costs that, to update it, as well as future costs that the town might incur in such a thing. So, I'll give a, I'll give a quick update. I'd love, also, should the board have any questions? John DeLucia of Albemarle Associates is here. He was a professional engineer who has done it. He has long experience with both marine and civil construction here in Manio and well beyond. So, as a kind of a, some, kind of a summary of the, of the report here, you'll see, you'll see on the thing, we talked about the, the current condition, current condition assessment, and that was, that was, I can basically give a quick, a quick, one paragraph summary. So, and this is, this is, these are John's words, so I'm, I'm quoting. To summarize, the boardwalks are in fair condition, and most piles, girders, and joists likely have at least ten years of useful life. Decking in some fasteners will need to be replaced soon as they are degrading. The decking needs replacement now as it is dry and splitting, and the fasteners are rusting. Some of the piles supporting the boardwalk are rotted and need to be replaced with decking replacement. The thirty-year-old underlying bulkhead and breakwater has reached its useful life and should be replaced soon. It is my opinion that the bulkhead slash breakwater replacement will require that the boardwalk be removed and replaced concurrently. The cost to replace both the boardwalk and bulkhead is estimated to be just under five hundred thousand dollars. If the bulkhead slash breakwater and boardwalk are replaced now, an annual reserve funding of thirty-five thousand per year could be expected for the next thirty years for future repairs and replacement.
For the next, for the year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That would, and that, what that, the question there is, if, assuming, assuming the replace, the replacement that's projected for the next couple of years here, assuming that was replaced, now you've got a, basically, you know, a nearly new facility there, and then you have to, we should budget, to be prudent, we should budget a certain amount of reserve per year to pay for both interim maintenance costs during that thirty-year life, as well as the replacement at the end of the thirty-year life. So, that, we wanted to make sure that was shown as a, as a cost, a future cost going forward, so thirty-five thousand was the estimate for those future repairs and replacements.
Yes, thank you, Manio.
In, in the proposed scenario, where that would be, that would be a responsibility of the Town of Manio. Now, in terms of, and there's, and so, speaking of Marsh's Light, as we go to the, as we go to the next slide, this is, this is about legal topics. So, the board also talked about, well, what are the next steps? And in fact, the, the homeowners who presented on this in front of the board, they, they outlined a couple of things, a couple of their concerns. So, on the left-hand, left-hand side of the slide, you'll see two documents. These are excerpts from two different public, public documents. The one at the top says, "Public Parks and Boardwalks." That's an excerpt from the conditional use permit. So, this, this particular development required a conditional use permit, which requires negotiations between the developer and the governing body. And in this particular one, it's section three, if you go back to, if you go back to this, this whole section, this, this is 3A, for example, it's D to the Town of Manio, this is the actual easement, which is a public park in perpetuity. And they also talk about an extension of the town's boardwalk there in 3B. And then 3C is the critical part that was brought up by the homeowners, which is, "The park and the boardwalk shall be maintained by the developers slash homeowners and match as closely as possibly existing public park and boardwalk in the historic downtown." So, it's clearly a matter of public record that this boardwalk was to be maintained by the developers slash homeowners. That similar language is found, and that's very plain language, it's not successors on the signs or anything, that's very clear, plain language. Then in the, in the part below that, where it starts with boardwalk easement, that's the actual easement language by which the easement, an easement for the public to walk over that boardwalk and access, access these areas, the boardwalk easement has very similar language. If you go down there, it says, basically, the, you know, the grant, the grantor, you know, we're talking about the developer here, it says, "Including any association of property owners in the development of Marsh's Light shall be responsible for the maintenance repair and any necessary replacement of those improvements through the boardwalk easement." So, the homeowners were, were concerned that because they're responsible, they will, they will, and they, as they bought in this community, that they're going to be responsible for those costs. Further, they expressed a concern if a storm hit and they, if there was required replacement or repair, that they're not eligible for FEMA funds for that. And I did confirm, we had staff here, I gave them the scenarios where it was owned by the town versus owned by a private entity or even a, even a conservation nonprofit, and the only of those three scenarios in which FEMA would pay the reimbursement would be if it was owned by the town. However, these, and you, but you can see that it's been public, it's been publicly known for many years that this is, this is that responsibility. So, I can confirm what was expressed by the homeowners there in terms of responsibility, current responsibility for that boardwalk. Now, so that, that's on the legal side. Another thing on the legal side that we would have to address is potential future interactions. So, you'll see on the right hand of the screen, KAMA permit plan. This is an excerpt from the plan, so as it's been, the KAMA has put a public comment period, which expires the next week or so, in terms of a proposed permit application by the current developer. And as you can, as you can see on the screen, it includes not just a wave attenuator or breakwater, but also includes additional slips, kayak launch, et cetera. So, there's a significant, significant investment proposed there, at least on, at least under the permit. But because access to that area, both construction, so a temporary construction easement, as well as a future easement, that would be necessary to provide access should this, this thing, boardwalk be conveyed to the town. So, that's certainly something to consider, those, those new improvements being done by the, or being proposed by the, or not being done. First step there in the permitting process. If we go to the, if we go to the next page, we'll see potential feasibility activities. So, right now, the board's information it has is, it, you have the public information about what the easement says, we have cost information showing what, what impact that might have from a cost, cost standpoint to the town. And then there are other things, though, we have, if the, if the board chooses to proceed beyond this point, there would be other feasibility activities. The one example, professional services in several categories. So, surveying, of course, a certain license, a licensed surveyor would have to do the surveying in, in terms of preparing a plat for conveyance. Also, a legal description, that would be required. In addition, our survey would have to assess any encroachments or deviations. There's some indication that the boardwalk may have, that the existing thirty-foot easement may or may not contain all the improvements that are, that are being proposed for conveyance. So, the surveyor would, would take care of all that thing, but there is, there's a cost to that. Next up, of course, a financial advisor. In something like this, and we were hearing some of those numbers, you know, one would have to assess the financing mechanisms, are we talking about bonds or grants, et cetera. Unfortunately, some of the grants that we would have applied for, like we just recently applied for a tourism impact grant, the TIG, the TIG funding wouldn't, this wouldn't be eligible because it would be like maintenance repair or something, it's not creation of a new thing, that's a new destination like the town common was, and for which we were awarded funds on Page One. And then the legal stuff, things, well, and that was also pointed out by our, by our friends over there at the Homeowners Association, conveyance managers, the drafting of a deed, and of course, we'd have statutory processes versus a donation of real property. We talked about cross easements due to the proposed developer improvements, and that's, that's something we'd have to work through. And also, assessment of rights and responsibilities. You know, in the current easement, you know, with the current easement, the, the public has the right to walk on the boardwalk, for example, so those are rights we currently have. So, how would, by, how would, accepting donation of property, how would that change those, those existing rights? Also, public ownership, those that comes with responsibilities. So, responsibilities for future maintenance, liability, insurance, whatever it might be. So, we certainly would want legal guidance on those types of, those types of activities. So, should the board decide to move this, move this, move it forward, I want you to be aware that we do have fees, the potential additional feasibility activities before any final decision is made, but those feasibility activities come with a, you know, come with a cost for professional services. So, I'm certainly happy to, to take any guidance now, or I know we're not looking for a motion or vote, but I'd certainly appreciate any guidance because I would, certainly wouldn't want to procure additional professional services if the, depending on what the will of the board might be.
Any questions? We have an attorney here, we have, um, thank you for coming. Any questions from the board?
I do. Surveying and paying for legal advice and financial advisor. Would it be appropriate if, and again, if, I'm about to put my foot in my mouth, please stop me, but would it be appropriate for town manager to contact Saga and the homeowners group and sit down together as a group, or maybe not sit down together right now, but teleconference, whatever you gotta do, to see exactly what they are proposing? Because it was just property, it seems like that's a, a bit on the taxpayers, but maybe there's more to that deal and see exactly what we're looking at. No, maybe it's not just property, maybe it's property and maybe they're gonna do some updating or, or what have you. So, to see the full scope of what they're talking about so we can get a complete picture before we start. Some kind of community board.
Just to mention to Collins, I agree with Eddie about, you know, letting the town manager work with Marsh's Light, homeowners association and Saga, so we can determine exactly what we get ourselves into. They suggested to do some kind of action plan, so we'll know exactly what we're looking at.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. More questions?
That's the same.
Same thing, Mr. [inaudible].
So, it's, am I understanding the people?
We've pulled off of this stuff right now, I guess, until we get, we can advance what's going on over there.
Yeah, I'm thinking we need to start paying for surveyors or anything like that. I think it's, we need to know exactly what they want to donate, whatever repairs they may feel they need to make before they donate it, or what they expect us to do if they weren't done it. But I just think we need a more complete picture with, I think we need something with you and Saga and homeowners to get together to, just so everybody's on the same page with what they're proposing.
Yeah, I, I think we're all on the same page. I, I think this is the beginning of the feasibility, and appreciate getting us to, to step one here. But now we know what the condition is and what the cost is and all that, and that doesn't mean say yes or no. I mean, what, what does it look like? I mean, and I like the idea of, with what an action plan would look like to see if it's, you know, whether that's, whatever else that looks like, whether it's the financial details that go with the boardwalk being handed off, whether it's getting creative... the boardwalk being handed off, whether it's getting creative and, you know, adding assets and, you know, other vacant land there to the equation. However it is, I'd like to see us moving forward and seeing what is, what it would actually look like.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor Proketa. And I understand, I get a complete picture. We'll get deal points and provide additional information. What do we usually say? Good information begets good decision-making. So, we'll continue to gather that on behalf of the board. Thank you for the feedback. As we go on to the next particular issue, this is called budget options for board initiatives. And this particular topic is coming as a result, as we moved to the first page, it comes about as comments, suggestions from the board in terms of potential, potential new things, either new things or revised things that were not necessarily originally budgeted, but which has come forward through constituents, through board ideas directly, and even in one case, a feedback from the county on a shared project. So, let's start with the easy one. This particular one, when we show, and we're used to thinking, it's okay, so if we've got new needs, so what are, you know, those are the uses of the funds, well, where are we going to get the money? The sources of funds. So, as we look at sources and uses of the funds, let's talk about the cemetery fund first. And one of our commissioners is liaison to the cemetery board, of course. And the thought was to go ahead, we needed to proceed with arches at the entry. Now, there were two remaining arches, and you can see on the right-hand side, a picture of the arches there at the Manio Cemetery. And the budget contained $17,050 for one arch this year and potentially another arch next year. Now, we did get from the vendor a estimate on it now. Turns out, though, as measurements are taken, the arches are actually larger in the other areas entering the cemetery. So, the cost estimate came in above at $24,250 per arch for the larger one. Or if we wanted to do both at the same time and finish the whole project, that'd be $48,500 for both. Now, we do have a source of funds. Unrestricted fund balance for the cemetery does have over $68,000 available. And the difference between what's currently in the budget and the other is about $31,000 and change. So, if this was something the board wanted to proceed with, we would come back at the next November meeting with a proposed budget amendment, should the board think, okay, this is something, it was something already envisioned. It just requires extra money, and there is funds in the cemetery balance, in the cemetery funds to do so. And we were looking for a little bit of feedback on that, not, no need for a vote or anything now, but if that's something we should proceed with, we would certainly want to bring it back to the board at its November meeting for action.
Thank you, Jay.
This Commissioner Collins, how much money is in the cemetery fund?
Well, the unrestricted fund balance is $68,000. There's also, we also have some restricted funds there as well. So, we were only looking at the unrestricted piece, and that was $68,000 available. And if one arch was done, we would need to take, we would need to take about $7,000. I'm sorry, yeah, about $7,000 in change out of there. If we did, if we did both arches, it would be about $31,000 and change.
Any other comments? No comments.
This is Christine.
This Christine here?
Yes, yes. This is Christine. I, you know, we, I think we have, we've had, you know, that plan in place for quite a while. And I realize it's a lot of money. And, you know, I don't really feel comfortable right away with both, spending the money for both. But I would like the board's consideration for at least one of the arches to complete sometime in the near future.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Any more comments?
So, what are you looking, you're not looking for action on this tonight?
I know Commissioner Borland, all we're looking for is a little bit of direction because we wouldn't waste your time bringing it up as a budget amendment at the November meeting unless it was some thought that we should transfer in either 7 grand or 31 grand to work on this project. But if it is, if the board's interested in that, or if there's even any interest, we can still bring it forward. It can be voted up or down at that meeting.
Okay. Any more? If not, we move to the next items.
Okay, great. This one is much larger, and this goes to the general fund, which of course is a much larger budget anyway. So, we talked about sources and uses of funds. And I'll actually start with the sources of funds. I'll go over to the right, I'll go over the right-hand side. And again, just for sake of argument, the numbers we're talking about now is because we're starting, we're having the preliminary discussion. So, these are rough order of magnitude numbers only where we have them. In some cases, it's only to be determined because the scope hasn't been determined. But let's talk right now about sources of funds. Some of the sources of funds you see on the right-hand side there, they were, some are programmatic in nature and some are construction in nature. So, starting with the top one, the Manio Resident Relief Fund. That one was an initiative to help residents who had been impacted by COVID-19 with utility funds up to a maximum of 500 per household. However, based on, based on our latest information in terms of folks who need that assistance, we've had one person take advantage of it up to the maximum amount of 500, and we had a dozen other potential applications. So, we believe, based on what we're seeing from our actual customer base, that we would be no more, we would need no more than $10,000 at a maximum for those eligible residents, which would leave then $90,000 in the relief fund, general fund money that could be allocated perhaps to other programs that also help the community, but in different ways. Next item, you'll see the town common Phase 1. What we're seeing, we were thrilled to see that bids came in, the low bid came in below the engineers estimate, although some other bids came in right around it, or one slightly, one was higher. But with the aggressive bidding and the outreach there, that came in below the expectation. Now, we'll talk a little bit about uses of funds, but right now, it looks like we could safely consider anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000 as underspent, or thank goodness to a low bid, underspent funds that have to be used for other construction projects or similar things. Special events. Now, special events, of course, we've just been devastated by how we've had to have cancel events due to the restrictions on crowd gathering and things like that due to the public health situation. But I mean, as an example, given the current feedback from the state, it seems unlikely we could, for example, put thousands of people together for a New Year's celebration. You know, making s'mores and around the fire and dancing to bands and things. That seems highly unlikely at this time. And for that particular special event, it was $20,000 budgeted to at least do the initial part of the family-friendly stuff and the candy, you know, the early ball drop and the candy for the kids and all that. And that seems highly unlikely in the current scenario and all the feedback we're getting from Raleigh right now. So, that, for example, would yield $20,000 program activities. And one last one, this one bids went the other direction. So, the sale of the 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street lot, that one, we'd put a reserve price of $50,000 in there. It had budgeted that for the coming fiscal year since the board, prior to the adoption of the budget, had authorized the sale of that lot as surplus property. Well, if we have $50,000 in the budget, later in this agenda, you'll be asked to consider the high bid, which came in at $65,000. Now, even if we have closing costs and things like that, we still would yield at least $10,000 more than what we had in our current fiscal year budget. So, if you add up some of those sources of funds, we're talking about $200,000 to $220,000 that we can feel comfortable can be assigned to programs and needs that the board might have. Now, if we go to the left-hand side of the page behind me, we have various uses. And again, these occur in different ways through constituent comments, board suggestions, all sorts of mechanisms. So, the first one, causeway cleanup. That had come up several times with the board in looking at different ways. And although NC DOT with their restricted funds, they were trying to do litter pickup right before mowing. But now, as we get in this time of year, it's, there's going to be less mowing, so therefore, less litter pickup. But the board had asked us to kind of look at some alternatives here as we talked to DOT in Dare County. But one of the alternatives we asked to look at was, well, how about, like, either contractor or part-time employee? So, we looked at that. An example of this would be, say, a part-time employee just working 30 hours, but they still need benefits. I mean, if they're working at our direction, they're not just a 1099, an independent contractor. We're telling them what to do. So, they have to be classified as an employee for Department of Labor rules. So, in this case, a part-time employee, 30 hours with benefits, would cost us around $41,000 a year. That's just an example of the kind of cost, rough order of magnitude. Another example, second, you see the boat ramp parking lot repairs. That particular, and I understood that had been in some condition for years, but that came up at a board meeting and elsewhere. And looking at those repairs, especially if we get past boating season, that would be around $20,000. The next one, town common Phase 2 design work. And I put a note here, if the grant's awarded. In this particular case, if the, we have a, of course, applied for the grant to the Visitors Bureau, that tourism improvement grant, tourism, that TIG funding. We have, we've applied and we were asking for a grant of $240,000 toward that Phase 2. I just got an email earlier today that the assessment of those grants won't happen until November. There were so many applications that came in, they're not going to consider it until November with their screening committee. And then, it would go to the board, the Dare County Tourism Board, and from there, the Dare County Board of Commissioners. But should we be awarded that, we would need to design Phase 2 and design the other wrestling facilities and the trade structure and that stuff. And we're estimating that about $50,000 or $60,000. Again, I wouldn't even want to procure those services until we got the grant. Next up, sidewalk improvements on Sir Walter Raleigh Street. So, that came to the board a number of times about extending the sidewalk where it's not been done on, or where it hasn't been completed between the playground and a hardware there on the north side of Sir Walter Raleigh. And there were also some discussions of the bump outs, whether they're in or out, or what they're in, more landscaping than just the Indian Hawthorns, things like that. Now, that's to be determined. That's a pretty big project. And some of our sources of funding, like DOT and some of their programs have dried up. But nonetheless, we would still like, if we had available money, we would look to see if we can leverage those grant, leverage matching funds for some personal grants. Of course, affordable housing. Well, that's to be determined. We're going to talk a little bit more about affordable housing later, just a few minutes here. But whatever we do in affordable housing, if we take steps forward this fiscal year, whether it's even simple design fees for looking at sites or consulting fees, even if we don't put one, you know, one unit on the ground this year, we still would have some initial costs should the board decide to pursue affordable housing options. We want to keep that in mind. Operation Safe and Dry is kind of similar to that. We had talked about that earlier at budget retreat. And this is a neighborhood assistance program where it's tied into affordable housing. But this is intended to use some town matching funds to go after grants, including some of the HUD grants, et cetera, that will allow us to help people remain in their homes if they have a leaky roof or HVAC going down, or even skirting around a mobile home that, and now the air is coming up under the mobile home, or whatever it might be. To keep people in their homes and keep that community fabric is important. And we talked before about, you know, $20,000, $30,000 budget to kind of be granting leveraging funds for some of these HUD and other grants. Of course, when COVID hit, we had to cut a lot of budget items, but that was one of the ones that was cut out. Another item that the board asked to bring up, in fact, I promised one of the commissioners to bring it back up in October, there was the issue of staff bonuses. Members of the board talked about staff bonuses, and these are two different ones. One is COVID-19, is staff came out and still tipping, you know, tipping the trash and doing the water and sewer and doing the law enforcement, even in the COVID environment, especially in those early days when it was such a big concern. There was a request to say, how much would it cost to do a bonus for that in lieu of like hazard payers and all that? But they were looking at that, and at a $500 level that was suggested, that would be a $30,000 impact. Also, the mid-year bonus, which would traditionally come in the November meeting, the holiday bonus, that one, it was last year's $350. That impact is $21,000. Although, that one, I believe, we have available budget funding. But again, I want to make a distinction between the mid-year and the COVID bonus that was assessed by the board. Forensic audit, that was also pulled off as a result of COVID. That was also pulled off, and we'd originally estimated that in the $80,000 to $100,000 range. Of course, the Marsh's Light boardwalk, I will say to be determined because, again, we don't, this, while any cost that may come in, big cost would be presumably next fiscal year, there would still be costs now should the board decide for some professional services to move the conversation forward. And of course, Shallow Bag Bay dredging. Now, this one, the board, it's been a long time since the board heard about this project because it's not a town-run, this is being run by Dare County. They took on this project, and as you can see from the map behind me on the right-hand side, this is actually the work done, the bathymetric survey done by the Corps of Engineers. And we have areas shown, it ranges 1 through 4. It gets us both from the Marina all the way out, all the way out to the big channel, out to Range 5. This does everything from helping our Marina and our boaters, both commercial and recreational, and it gets the Elizabeth 2 out of reverse so that she doesn't rot in place. And of course, we're very, very aware of that, you know, that history and significance there. One of the things that the county, as they encountered this and the funding came in, they have enough money to do ranges 1 through 4 under their current budget and bid. And there was an expectation that project would be done this year during the off-season. However, state rules require that when we do that dredging, or when they do that dredging on our behalf, that it connects to an area that's deep, so that Range 5, right at the end of what you see there on your screen, especially those areas in red, Range 5 is, it needs to be the same depth. And we would need to do a local share to get the DEQ grant funding to finish off that range. The impact to the town would be $26,000 for a 30-foot channel or $43,000 for a 50-foot channel. And that's significant, not just because of the channels and the discussion of dredging, but it's also important because it's time-sensitive. This particular one, they would actually want a commitment from us for them to move forward on that. So, you can see there's a lot of different potential uses for those funds that we listed there. I'm happy to take feedback on any of those items, or if you prefer to talk amongst, you know, I'm happy to take, like I say, any guidance on those, or we can bring it up at the next meeting to try and make some very specific recommendations. We just wanted to make sure we follow up on these suggestions that the board had and try and find sources of money that could address some of these needs that were brought up.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Move on? All right. Thank you, Mayor Proketa, Selby. All right, so we'll move on to the next one. This is policy options for essential housing. As I referenced earlier in the discussion, this particular topic, it's a huge topic. And honestly, this is one I really feel for the town of Manio. Every jurisdiction which I've served has had issues with parking and with either affordable workforce for essential housing. And it's good news on one hand that you've got a thriving community, so you need parking, or you need housing. The housing stock has gone up such that it becomes an affordability issue. I know that we'd rather be in that situation than some others in the state. And I know this board took leadership on attacking the parking issue. I mean, we've, later in the agenda, we'll talk about awarding a contract to get underway and get rolling with this thing. But affordable housing is even trickier than just developing a park in a parking lot. Affordable housing has so many different components, like I can't possibly get into every piece here. But as we go to the first slide in this, I'm just going to bring some sample public policy issues. Again, we don't have to answer tonight, but these are, these are the kind of questions we often use for strategic planning. So, but let's start with some definitions here. You'll see on the screen behind me at the very top, words matter. And we have seen the topic of affordable housing out there, but we've also seen some change. For example, Dare County, as part of their assessment, they're now calling it essential housing. And I think in some ways, they're trying to, they're trying to make, you know, demonstrate that it is essential to have a housing stock for your employees, for your residents, for your people to actually, you know, live where they work. But let me give kind of the distinction here. This is, I'm working with like Brookings Institution and School of Government on some of these definitions. So, but there's a range here. But affordable housing, think about housing choice vouchers, formerly known as Section 8. That's up to 50% the area median income. So, those particular ones are, that's what they're kind of looking at, at the low-income area there. Now, the next one says, "Low-income housing tax credit properties." And this is another well-used program that helps developers build housing that can be affordable to folks with up to 80% of the area median income. But workforce housing, there's no standard definition of this, but what we're seeing, even though it varies, typically, we're seeing it is about 80 to 120% of the area median income. And the reason workforce housing is a little different, they're trying to attract, for example, the teachers and firefighters and, you know, retail shop folks that, folks that, you know, they are in our workforce. And I can tell you right now that I have staff that live in five counties. So, many of them have to drive quite a ways to get here. And it doesn't matter whether it's out to Preswell or Plymouth, or whether it's up in Currituck, they have to drive to get here. It's so much better when your employees can be here, be in the community. I think it's one of the reasons why the board wanted the manager to live in the area so you can be here and respond, be part of the community. Because when you're part of the community, it's not just for response time, it's for, you know, for being embedded. So, I think that's why workforce housing is so So I think that's why workforce housing is so popular these days by jurisdictions looking at it. Now, another public policy, so now we've got the language down, we can, we can think about what are we, what are we looking, what are we trying to attract here? But one of the biggest uses is rental versus for-sale units. So the town's current ordinance really only talks about its bonuses for affordable housing in terms of units that are for sale. And that can be, that can be good because in one respect, there are some of the folks were, some of the folks that are, that would be potential, potential buyers of these four cities, we want to help them build generational wealth. So if you know, generation, generation of your family is living in this house, that's a great way to build wealth and long-term. But we also know that there are potential problems where we've seen affordable houses, person buys it and then they flip it after a year and make a profit, but there's, now it's no longer affordable, now it's heck up the market rate. And, and we see some examples of that right here in Manio. Rental on the other, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of the folks that are doing studies locally and, and regionally is that folks need a place to rent. Sometimes they haven't saved up enough for a down payment, or they may not be eligible for a VA or, or other type of loan, so, which has a lower down payment. But they really just need a place to live, a place to rent, as they, as they embark on their career or as, or as they have family income there. So rentals are very popular, but also, as we know around here, very hard, very hard to find. So kind of that rental versus for-sale, that becomes a policy level issue. Also, structural approaches, you know, there are different ways to do, many different ways to do this. But one example is say, okay, does a town manage the project? In other words, town as developer. Pros and cons, having, having done that in another jurisdiction, someone will say, well, that's not your core business, you shouldn't be developing. But sometimes if, if it's a small project, the town has the ability to do it in a way that does make it more affordable. So there's some balance there. We, we don't want to, I don't want to say get out of our lane because affordable housing is in our lane, as the board has directed us to look at it. The town subsidizes projects is another way. And the subsidy can be done different ways. We've heard, for example, when we listen to what the UN, University of North Carolina, the DFI group there was, the Development Financiers, what they were looking at for Dare County. One of the subsidies that's typical, either, either what they've identified here or we've seen in other jurisdictions, is they say, oh, well, can the town, you know, can the town provide subsidies in terms of access to the sewer and water and things like that? And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. That's more of a, that's a sub, that's a subsidy. And then the last one is town encourages projects. And that's more likely through things like the type of zoning rules that would allow density bonuses or encouragement of accessory dwelling units, so you can get two units on a property and the primary house and the accessory dwelling unit. And that's more encouraging. So managing versus subsidizing, encouraging, there are different approaches. So that's, that's a policy issue that we'll talk, I'll just pull that, pull that up there. And of course, we've got to have a process for action. This board has made it clear that it's an action-oriented board. This board said go after, go after parking and, and park areas, go do the town common is going, but now affordable housing, I, we're hearing this board wants to take some action on the, I think the word is where we don't, we don't want to study, we want to, we want to do, we want to help the people. So we're, we're hearing that message. We go to the next slide, we talked about a, the, let's talk about long-term approaches first. And speaking of studies, I know that we don't want to say, let's go study this again, but let's just talk about a couple of different approaches. We know there's a lot of studying going on. We know the county's in the middle of their study and it's been happening a long, for a long time. But let's go to the left-hand side here, standalone affordable housing plan. This can be standalone, so some places do just standalone plan, it's like a strategic plan for affordable housing. The, the steps you see behind me, these are, this is actually a sample framework that North Carolina State, their school designed, they actually have used in other jurisdictions. So you start off with the research and education, best practices, what are other people doing? You educate, identifying your user groups and also special needs populations. I mean, we need to be talking to those, the folks who are going to be our users. You talk to your customers early in the process, you don't just build it and they will come, especially when it comes to a place where they're going to live for many years. Planning, of course, we've got to engage the stakeholders of the community. Of course, you may not be surprised to hear us use the phrase public participatory process because in any plan like this, we need to engage all of the stakeholders, not just the users, not just the developers, not just planners, we need everybody involved. Finance, we've got to assess options. And there's a real distinction, it's, you know, availability of grants and credits and things like that, but also options in terms of the community, we want to try and do things that are no cost or low cost to taxpayers because, you know, we've got folks who are, you know, worked hard, this board showed leadership in keeping, you know, tax rates down here in, in this past revaluation. So we want to make sure we keep the affordability here, even in a more fundamental way, for everybody. And of course, policy codes and zoning, we kind of talked a little bit about that, you know, density bonuses and planning rules and accessory dwelling units. So that's, there's a lot of things we can do from a code level or a zoning level. And C C, it also brings up sustainability. And sustainability is not just the green stuff, not just a lead building or, you know, energy, but sometimes you're thinking about, well, do you use local materials in buildings? Absolutely, let's support the local economy. And cultural and community traditions, so that's the kind of thing where you don't want to just plot down a house that looks like it, you know, came, came out of a big city into our lovely town. So sustainability comes a lot of dimensions there. And of course, the design, the design needs to be flexible and we need to, you know, figure out what materials we're using to, you know, make it long-term, long-term, you know, maintenance, low maintenance and things like that. And place-making, we kind of talked about the design, the place, we, one of the examples we have here, we actually talked about how we could make a place in a major intersection in town. But we'll come back to that in a sec. On the right-hand side, you see the comprehensive plan. So instead of a standalone, other jurisdictions in which I've worked, it's, comprehensive plan is one of those guiding documents. So a comp plan is required in North Carolina. We know that we've talked about it and we've gotten until July 1st, 2022 to have a comp plan because right now we do not have what is a full comp plan, planned use plan and the comprehensive code, but we don't have a true comp plan. In my past experience and when I've seen other jurisdictions, you have a chapter on housing. Housing is critical and affordable housing is a key section in that. So that's normally involved in the comp plan process, you already, it's already embedded in there. Because a comprehensive plan does inform our zoning orders, that's the way it should work. Comprehensive plan flows up to what we want to look like a community, flows down to the planning and zoning that reflects that desire of the public and the elected officials and others. And, and so the zoning orders, we, we talked about density bonuses or sometimes location basis, whether it's redevelopment of brownfield sites or getting it close to amenities, things like that. And, but the comprehensive plan isn't just informing the zoning orders, it's also, it's a lit, it's an ongoing document, it aligns with the budget. We used to always have to have show how our budget request would line up with a goal in the comprehensive plan and/or the strategic plan. And that alignment should be true here, you know, whether it's a capital improvement plan, a CIP, if we're building something, it should really align with, with the goals in the comp plan. Or general fund, if it's a program like, if it's, if it's a program that performs a kind of subsidy or neighborhood assistance program, those are programmatic things and we've got general fund dollars for it, but it needs to align with what we're saying. Now, those are long-term things and we can kind of think about what process we want to figure out to decide tonight, but there's two real different approaches to the planning of this thing. But I know this board talked about being action-oriented, so if we go to the next slide, let's talk about short-term approaches. Because one of the words that came up before was demonstration project. And so I'm just use the phrase pilot projects or programs. So let's, let's talk about it. So we just, last, last month, the board annexed the property that the town has owned for some years there across from the Key Island Life Saving, Life Saving Station Museum, the Cook House. It's also across from Cartwright Park and Head Start. What a great location, you're near all these great amenities and it's .909 acres. So something can be done with it. So several, a town-owned property, well, if it's, if we have a town-owned property, this is just one example, the town is developer, there's a town, should the town develop a demonstration project or pilot project here of several single-family homes, you know, a handful of townhomes, whatever it might be? Or do we do a public-private partnership where we put in the land and a developer comes in and builds the things and then, and, and they, they operate, they operate these units? So a couple of different approaches there, but town-owned property, that's an asset that we already own. We don't have to go out and buy it. But the town isn't the only landowner in the area, third-party property. I mean, we've heard that Dare County has, has a project right on Bowser Town, that's, that's considered a, has been considered affordable housing for a long time. But if they get access to town utilities now, the yield can increase because they don't need room for septic tanks. The access to our utilities, more density, more houses, more affordability. But there's also, you know, a potential, a potential, a potential cost to that either directly or indirectly. So for example, it's very common for those kinds of developments to require some kind of a town, like for example, town fees for sewer and water, for there to be an asset that be held in abeyance to keep the affordability level down. The same thing goes for town rates. So the rates for water and sewer, most examples out of town would pay a higher sewer and water rate than in-town folks. But that might be, that would be an asset they would have. And this was, I think this was mentioned also by the consultant for the county, to keep the rates at the in-town rate to make, because the people paying those water bills in the future are those folks who need affordable housing. So having them pay double rate is something that, that will be an ask. So, but we need to know what the board is comfortable with in terms of those kinds of, those kinds of partnerships. And one last example here on short-term approaches, I mentioned Operation Safe and Dry, this board, we talked about that before, this neighborhood assistance. But the goal of that is to keep residents in their homes. I mean, that's the best way to keep community fabric, is help people stay in their homes. That's about most affordable housing is the one they're already in. And if we help them stay in it by doing any, you know, specialized home repairs like a roof leak or HVAC out or something like that, keeping them in their homes, we can help folks in a lot of different ways. So that may be a smaller kind of pilot project or program, but it certainly needs to be considered just as much as building something new, as helping people stay in something that's existing. So these are just some examples of approaches we can take. I'd love to get feedback, or we may get feedback, like we, we may even get feedback in public comment on these approaches. But we do have options for this board to start taking action should decide to do so.
Thank you. Lot of information, a lot of good information. Something we certainly need to do and act on, we could be here for another two hours, a lot on the agenda, so ask the board to, any concerns, to please email the town manager so we can move, move along on this agenda. So we'll go into public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Selby. So item six on the agenda is public comment. This is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location so that your statements can be recorded. So what we'll do is, if it's all right with you, Mayor Potem Selby, we can, we can take, we can take feedback from the in-house audience first and then we'll get our assistants to get, get some assistance from our facilitator to get some online feedback. Stop over here and we'll look for our first, our first comment.
[inaudible] now, yes.
[inaudible] the executive director of Dare, I'm under one two coalition, 511(c)(3) nonprofit, CDC and Dare County in Manio. I'm going to jump straight into the topic we were talking about, affordable housing or essential housing here in Dare County. And that we are, 511(c)(3) nonprofit, there's our, benefits that the county cannot benefit from, I'm working with the nonprofit and also the town of Manio. But as you know, that Dare County already have implemented some ideas, working with the UNC school for us, like trying to find the appropriate property to actually get affordable housing done. But like you said, the terms that's being used is essential housing. I'm proposing to actually do low-income housing. That's something totally different, it's credits that the town and the county can actually benefit from, from actually having these houses. But actually to qualify for these housings or these tax credits, you have to be with certain, certain distance with these amenities, such as like grocery stores, parks, things of that nature, and even schools. I actually am partnering with, had opportunity to actually partner with experienced developers out of North Carolina called Howcome Developers and also East Point Homes. And they are, I'm going to give you a little rundown of their background. Had opportunity to work with them at the end of last year to the beginning of this year, but unfortunately, the funds that was required from our small organization, which we've only been established, yes, next month will be two years. So for us to actually acquire certain grants and monies received from the state and federal level, it was unheard of for us to actually apply for these multi-million dollar grants so we can be official and move forward with affordable housing. But I've been working my butt off and actually got in contact with these developers that's willing to partner with us, but we only have 1% of the shares. And also like a $20,000 after this development that they had proposed for us to do, which is a 64 units, $12 million development. But the property has to be at least four acres for this development to be done. And also within, like you said, within that one to two miles of all the amenities. So there's only two properties that actually will actually benefit that, and Dare County owns one, and one is owned by a family member of mine's, a neighbor, so, which is 19 acres, which could be developed. But being so close to water treatment plants, and that's why the county property they was looking at by Bowser Town is, it won't qualify for low taxes, it would not, because I've done my homework and it's too close to the water treatment plant and it would cut them off for actually getting that low income tax credit. So like I said, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I know I have three minutes, there's so much I want to cram into it, but, but the individuals and experienced developers and contractors that we've worked with, with the combined, developed, they had done 50 communities. We won 2018 for North Carolina High and Fire Nests and Agencies for outstanding developments. And also, this in Ashboro and Aiden, North Carolina. East Point Homes is actually located in Jacksonville, North Carolina, a construction company. And they also construct their property in Cartwright County and other eastern communities. So, so I was putting it out there that Dare Minority Coalition is willing to partner with also Dare County, also the town of Manio, to actually receive those tax credits and benefits and grants that would, that would, would not have access to without dealing with the nonprofit.
Mr. Carver.
Yes.
Three minutes.
Yes, three minutes.
Who's doing the timekeeping?
Is that three minutes? I didn't even touch on the reentry.
Yes, we appreciate it. And Mr. Carver.
Thank you.
Here in public comment, we used to ask for your address and I forgot to ask your address.
Excuse me?
Your address.
Address.
Oh, address.
For the record, yeah.
For the record, the Dare Minority Coalition address is 100 East Dunn Street, Magset.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know you could go on and on and cause that's your passion.
I was there for like 30 seconds.
All right, Mayor Potem, and looking, seeing no, no additional folks here in the audience, we'll go ahead and look, look and see if we have anybody in our listening audience. Members of the public, if you'd like to make a public comment, please hit star nine on your phone and your hand will be raised virtually and our facilitator will check out. We do have a, we do have a hand raised already. And, well, I don't have the last four digits to the cell phone, but I can see it's identified as Nicole Northrup. So, Nor, Ms. Northrup, you're, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a good meeting, nice and long, too. I would like to speak in support of the Causeway cleanup as one of the items that we're looking at funding. And I also feel that housing for workers in Dare County who make a lower income is also critical. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Northrup, thank you so much.
We're looking on the screen and if anybody would like to comment, hit star nine on your phone and we'll see your hand raised. We see no hands up one last time, hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to speak. Mayor Potem Selby, it appears we have nobody else on the public comment.
No more public comments. Anybody here, private comment? Here and now, we appreciate it. Thank you. We'll go into new business and real quickly.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Potem Selby. Item seven, seven A of new business, this is appointment of representative to Dare County Tourism Board. The DCTB has asked us for an appointment or reappointment. As indicated in the staff report, our existing representative, Mayor Owens, is willing to serve another term and they are asking for action from the Board of Commissioners as to its representative. This does require a motion, a second and a vote.
Currently, we have Mayor Owens on that tourism board?
Yes, Mayor Potem.
I move to reappoint Mayor Owens to the tourism board.
Can I vote?
I'm not sure. That was, that was a question that I had earlier tonight, that the statute's really clear that the mayor can't vote. And the statute's not really clear that the mayor Potem is not the chairman or the mayor. I think you voted on other things tonight, so I think that's been the historical practice when the mayor Potem has been there. So I would, at this point, absent, I'm not even sure where to look for the answer, because the statutes don't tell you. I would say that you do get to vote.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You are not the mayor, but you are the, a council member who is chairing the meeting.
Thank you so much, because the mayor is not here and I'm just stepping in and I'd like to vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Selby. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Mann, a second by Commissioner Collins. Would you like me to do the roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right. For the appointment, Mayor Potem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Selby, you have a unanimous vote on that motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item seven B, award of town common construction contract. This is, this is, this is for action as well. We, we have, we were, as reported earlier, we were very pleased to see bids, bids come in, they've been appropriately vetted, and it was all done in accordance with the statutory process. Our, our engineer for the projects here, and he has made his, he has made his recommendation for us to make, make the award, the, to the, to the low bidder, which is RPC Contracting Inc. And there is a proposed action here, would require a motion, a second, and a vote to, to make, to authorize the town manager to move forward with the contract and any amendments there, too.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute contract with RPC Contracting for the town common project with a value of $458,410, and any amendments within the allocated budget.
Second.
All right, Mayor Potem Selby, we've got a mo, we've got a motion by Commissioner Borland, a second by Commissioner Mann. If you'd like me to go ahead and do the roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mayor Potem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Selby, you have a unanimous vote there. All right. Item seven C on the agenda, consideration of sealed bids for 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street. The, we have, as indicated in the staff report and our prior report to the board, we did receive two sealed bids in accordance with, with state law, and they were both deemed to be, both deemed to be responsible in accordance with the statute. Our recommendation is to, of course, also in accordance with the statute, to take the high bid of $65,000. The proposed actions of board to authorize the town manager to take all necessary actions, including execution of closing documents, as needed to sell the lot, it's 604 Sir Walter Raleigh, to the highest bidder. And that would require a motion.
Mr. Commissioner Collins, about a year and a half ago, that lot sold for $50,000. Now it's selling, if we, if we do this, this lot will sell for $65,000. That's a 30% increase in lot value. And I don't believe that we should be able to dictate the market in Manio, but a 30% increase is a lot. That's a lot of money. And any lot that sells at that same size in the town of Manio will start at $65,000. So we, we talked about affordable housing and stuff like that. What was the second bid change?
Commissioner Collins, the second bid was $51,000.
I, I know that you wanted to try to recuperate the money that we spent to deal with what happened to the town, but I don't think we should dictate increasing property value in town Manio, especially in 30%, that's a lot of money. So I mean, I think we should take the second bid.
Um.
Let's see what he said.
You say?
I guess what he's saying, he's going to say it's going to increase the value down that area.
I can, you know.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for the commissioner. I think from a statutory perspective, though, we did a sealed bid and we're obliged, if, assuming the high bid is responsible, we've determined they are, because they did submit the, the required surety. I, I believe the state statute obliges us to accept the high, the high sealed bid.
Bless you.
Seems like we're opening the door for some, some trouble for, for Ben over there, legally speaking.
I, I mean, it's a, really a first for me, for someone to sell something and not sell it for the highest price that someone was offering to buy it for. So that's certainly not something I've ever considered. I'll have to think my way through it a little bit, the...
Okay, can we put this on for next round, until he gets straight with it?
Well, the, the other problem may be that we might need to start with the resolution. Do you have the resolution available? Because there were two things about the resolution that were important. One was that the bid would be awarded or not tonight. And two, that the, my expectation, the resolution and that the bid document said that they would be awarded to the highest bidder. Is that correct? So whether, without regard to what the statute says, your choice would be to reject all bids and do it again.
So we've got to vote on it tonight to move forward or not, right?
You can, and, and backtrack in just one second. I think we've already got a motion and a second on the table to accept the highest. Is that correct? Or are we still, are we talking before that?
No, there's no motion on, on the floor.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd heard a few motions and I thought we were already there.
But do we need, if it fails, then, you know, basically, we can go down that road?
Well, I think your choices are to accept the high bid or to reject the bids and rebid it.
Right. Well, let's vote on, I mean, does anybody?
My fear is there, so now that's out in the ether, that if we rejected bids and are going to accept the low bidder, then somebody's going to bet a dollar.
Right. It's, that's a funny...
The bid, the bid was, was started at $50,000, where we, where, what we, what was spent on the lot in the beginning. That's where the bid would start.
Right, but if we're going to reject all bids today and then redo the process, we're going to be in the same boat, just kicking the can down the road.
I mean, if this board feels, feels confident enough to increase, 30% increase in lot value in town Manio, we already talked about affordable housing and affordable stuff, I mean, that's not the all. I'm not voting for it.
I mean, that's not the issue. The issue is that we advertise that we're going to accept the high bidder. That's, that's the issue to me, not the, not the monetary part.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I understand the intent and, and I don't disagree with the intent, but I do, I don't like the way it feels in terms of not doing what we, that we were going to do, and now at the last minute, feeling like we're backing out on, on our word. Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and Mayor Potem Selby, if I may, the, the question brought up, and our town attorney also talked about the resolution. Town planners pulled, pulled it up here. So to be clear, when I was reading it, when I was reading the statutes, the expectations, you accept the highest bid, assuming it's a responsible bid, and they've demonstrated that. Our resolution is, says the following, though I won't give the exact language. "The Board of Commissioners will determine the highest responsible bidder for the property and will award the bid, or reject all bids, by the end of the board's regular meeting, which begins on Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. Bids will remain open and subject to acceptance until the Board of Commissioners awards a bid or rejects all bids."
Well, at a certain point, we can't control the mark, what the market sets, you know? We could say, okay, we've got a minimum and we've got a cap, and then, so, the cap, you know?
In my opinion, I think we either, we either accept the bids or we reject the bids, and I think it would incumbent on us to do something with it as far as, like, the town owning that property, and the town has to figure out if it's affordable housing or not.
I'm, I'm not able to see anything, and the statute's just looking at it right here quickly. But when you look at the sale of property, you have to sell for market value, whatever that ends up being, you know, however you're, you're doing the market back. I mean, when, but you can gift to certain organizations for a public purpose. But to do that, you've got to go through various additional steps, and there's got to be a public purpose, and had to have been able to have donated money that organization in order to do that gift. That's where, you know, you know what the value of something is, and you're, give it to some organization, you may be able to do that. The problem I'm seeing here is, you know that the value of this property is currently $65,000, because that's what somebody's bid for it. If you give it to, if you accept the bid of the low bidder, you're ultimately giving that low bidder $24,000 or $14,000 worth of value in this case, because they could go the next day and sell it to the guy who's going to buy it for 65. And I, I think that's where the trouble is going to come in. If there's no public purpose there, essentially what you're doing is, you are, it falls back to the, what kind of a constitution, it comes to what's called a private emoluments, where you're essentially giving town funding or property to someone else without that person being someone. If it was a 501(c)(3)C that was doing affordable housing, I, I might have a little bit different perspective on it, but these are individual people, I believe, who've made both bids. I don't think, I mean, essentially, you're giving that additional value to that person in that lower bid process, and I think that that's going to be problematic. So I, I think at a minimum, if you're thinking about doing that, you need to look at it further.
I think, I, like I said, I'm, I like the intent. I, I feel like we're late in the game to do that, and so I would, I would be, I mean, my inclination is to move forward with it. And so I guess I'd, I'd, I move to authorize town manager to, to take necessary action, including execution of the documents and, as needed, to sell the lot on 604 Sir Walter Raleigh, the highest bidder.
Motion has been made in seconds.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Selby. I acknowledge your direction to go ahead with roll call. I'll just clarify, the motion was by, was by Commissioner Borland, the second was by Commissioner Burke. I'll go down the roll call. Mayor Potem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A. Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A. Mayor Potem Selby, the motion, the motion carries. Next up, item seven D. This is setting a public hearing for the College of the Albemarle Zoning Text Amendment 2020-08Z. That, in, in terms of clarity, this is, this zoning text amendment, there's two issues I should note. One, this isn't just for the College of the Albemarle, this is applicable to college, university, and community college campuses. It's a, it's a, it's a classification or use that hasn't really been called out quite, quite clearly. So this will, this will clarify those things, and I bet, the second part is, I want to note, this is just the board setting a public hearing. The board, the board is not considering the pros and cons of this. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board at its next meeting, they'll provide a recommendation to the board. But it is important from a process standpoint for the board to set a public hearing. We want to make sure there's plenty of daylight on this discussion, make sure it's heard both by the board, the public, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board. So the only action that would be really suggested tonight is simply to set the public hearing for this zoning text amendment 2020-08Z.
I'm making a motion to set a public hearing under them for, at 6:30 for zoning text amendment 2020-08Z.
I'll second. Seeing, seeing direction from Mayor Potem Selby, we've got a, a motion by Commissioner Mann, a second by Commissioner Borland. We'll go ahead with the roll call. Mayor Potem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
All right. Mayor Potem Selby, you have a unanimous vote on item seven D.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, item eight, item eight A. This is old business, this is for action. This is setting a public hearing for boatlift zoning text amendment 2020-07Z. This had previously been discussed by the Board of Commissioners and then referred back to the Planning and Zoning Board. They will be, they've, they're, of course, these are additional regulations for boatlifts beyond the one that was already adopted, and, but the action does require setting a public hearing to make sure there's additional chance for public comment and input. So the only action to be required would be to set a public hearing, which would require a motion, a second, and a vote.
I move to set a public hearing under 2020, at 6:30 for zoning text amendment 2020-07Z.
Second. All right. Seeing direction from Mayor Potem Selby, we've got a motion by Commissioner Mann, a second by Commissioner Borland. We'll go through the roll call. All right. Mayor Potem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
All right. Mayor Potem Selby, the motion passes unanimously, that takes care of the old business. Next up on the agenda, item nine, this is for information. These are mayor and commissioner comments.
Okay, if we ask, it's almost a late hour, but you keep your, your comments brief. We will start with Commissioner Walker.
I'm good, Daddy, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Collins?
I just want to remind everybody that October 15th is early, voted in, in person in, in North Carolina. So I think everybody should go and vote in person if you can, because now stuff is going right now. That's it.
Commissioner Burke?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Borland?
Yeah, I'll be quick, but I did want to bring up a couple things. I know, I know, I'm stretching it out. Holidays are coming, we talked about special events committee, and we've got that, that we're going to set. You know, I normally don't, normally don't make action at the workshop, but I don't know if it's appropriate to make some appointments there so that they can get rolling with holidays coming up quick, and wanting to have them, but like I said, they've got their hands full, and I'd like to, I'd like to see something happen around here, you know, not just punting what you've got going on. The other thing is, I did want to bring up the work of the 20-year plan group, that ended, and, well, the, the first review, initial review ended. And so we don't know what that's going to look like as it's presented to us. I know Melissa's working hard on that, and James and staff as well. You know, there's a lot of participation that took place, volunteers, and there's a lot of good information, and it's going to come through as a lot of good information. And I just want to make sure that we give that the, you know, the, the respect of all the hard work that everybody put in, because a lot of people did a lot of work, and it's great, great information. And then the last thing, I was thinking, the, the Manio Business Association, sounds like we've got funding there. Do we need any, what, what direction do you need from the board at this point? Do you need action to move forward? I hate, if we've got funding, you know, I hate... I hate, if we've got funding, you know, I hate to drag our feet on everything and, you know, let's see if people want to move forward with it or not.
And Mayor Protem Selby, if I may, address the, so the Commissioner Borland's comment, yes, yes, there's funding in place, yes, staff, staff is available. And I, the, even though the core group appear on the surface, maybe appear as small as a percentage of the overall number of businesses, they're enthusiastic, they're creative, they've continued to come to the listening sessions and things like that. So unless there's an objection from the board, we'd like to continue to engage in this group and find a path forward to help them establish the merchant association and provide assistance within our budgetary, existing allocation.
Burke, that's all I got.
Commissioner Mann?
I'll be brief. I just want to thank all of the members that were on the town commons project that worked together to help put the direction that the town is moving forward. I know that, that group has at least saved the town $100,000. And I say the town, they've saved taxpayers, they've saved everybody in the town money. So I want to thank them for their dedication, hard work, and I think the town is probably going to say a, a total amount that they've saved from the initial estimate from the
I have no comment. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn. Recede to the meeting, this meeting until October 21st at 5:00 PM.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All right. Seeing your direction, Mayor Protem Selby, we've got a motion, a motion by Commissioner Borland, second by Commissioner Mann. Mayor Protem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Selby, you have a unanimous vote to recess this meeting until October 21st at 5:00.
Okay.